All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 28th, and we will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Is there a discussion about the minutes? And if so, see none. If there is no discussion about the minutes, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 Mayor, just to make note, we have three councilmembers that are participating remotely today. Councilmember Ballard, Councilmember Frye, and Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 Oh, very good. Mayor, just to make note, we have three councilmembers that are participating remotely today. Councilmember Ballard, Councilmember Frye, and Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airborne Authority Board of Bids and Contracts save June of 7, 2022.
Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lopper, Department of Finance. There we go. So the Board of Bids for June 27, 2022 has as follows. Refurbish elevators at City Hall, recommend to defer to June, or July 11, excuse me, 2022. Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, year 1 of 3, recommend to award SHI International an amount of $982,126.38. Net motion platform for SHI International in the amount of $52,498.41. Cisco Smart net renewal for Converge 1 in the amount of $261,364.50. And for Airport, we have the Airport renovations of Customs and Porters Protection Facility, Phase 2. We're going to defer that to July 11, 2022. This is How to Become a Vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Is there any discussion on this item? If there is no discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to approve, I mean, to approve staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? That was what? That was the wrong one. Thank you. Please don't second that. I will restate my motion. To accept staff's recommended action, to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airborne Authority Board of Bids and Contracts save June of 7, 2022.
Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lopper, Department of Finance. There we go. So the Board of Bids for June 27, 2022 has as follows. Refurbish elevators at City Hall, recommend to defer to June, or July 11, excuse me, 2022. Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, year 1 of 3, recommend to award SHI International an amount of $982,126.38. Net motion platform for SHI International in the amount of $52,498.41. Cisco Smart net renewal for Converge 1 in the amount of $261,364.50. And for Airport, we have the Airport renovations of Customs and Porters Protection Facility, Phase 2. We're going to defer that to July 11, 2022. This is How to Become a Vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Is there any discussion on this item? If there is no discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to approve, I mean, to approve staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? That was what? That was the wrong one. Thank you. Please don't second that. I will restate my motion. To accept staff's recommended action, to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airborne Authority Board of Bids and Contracts save June of 7, 2022.
Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lopper, Department of Finance. There we go. So the Board of Bids for June 27, 2022 has as follows. Refurbish elevators at City Hall, recommend to defer to June, or July 11, excuse me, 2022. Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, year 1 of 3, recommend to award SHI International an amount of $982,126.38. Net motion platform for SHI International in the amount of $52,498.41. Cisco Smart net renewal for Converge 1 in the amount of $261,364.50. And for Airport, we have the Airport renovations of Customs and Porters Protection Facility, Phase 2. We're going to defer that to July 11, 2022. This is How to Become a Vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Is there any discussion on this item? If there is no discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to approve, I mean, to approve staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? That was what? That was the wrong one. Thank you. Please don't second that. I will restate my motion. To accept staff's recommended action, to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airborne Authority Board of Bids and Contracts save June of 7, 2022.
Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lopper, Department of Finance. There we go. So the Board of Bids for June 27, 2022 has as follows. Refurbish elevators at City Hall, recommend to defer to June, or July 11, excuse me, 2022. Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, year 1 of 3, recommend to award SHI International an amount of $982,126.38. Net motion platform for SHI International in the amount of $52,498.41. Cisco Smart net renewal for Converge 1 in the amount of $261,364.50. And for Airport, we have the Airport renovations of Customs and Porters Protection Facility, Phase 2. We're going to defer that to July 11, 2022. This is How to Become a Vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Is there any discussion on this item? If there is no discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to approve, I mean, to approve staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? That was what? That was the wrong one. Thank you. Please don't second that. I will restate my motion. To accept staff's recommended action, to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 9.
Is every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there a discussion? If there is no discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to approve, I mean, to approve staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. We're now in a resolution of the governing body of the City of Wichita regarding Karen Sublet's service to the city. I'll read the resolution. Whereas, City Code Section 204.130 sets forth the duties of City Clerk as follows. Quote, "The City Clerk shall be ex-official clerk for the council, shall keep minutes of the meetings, and shall, and shall perform such other duties and further duties in the meetings as may be directed by the City Council or City Manager. The City Clerk shall keep the official records of the city as may be required by the statutes, shall be authorized to maintain summary form of minutes indicating official actions taken in council meetings, and shall maintain recordings of all council meetings on file for a period of at least four years after each meeting. Summary minutes of each meeting shall show the attendants a short summary of each matter acted upon, the action taken with respect to each member, the vote, the dilations as ordered by the Chair, reprimands and ordered by the Chair, votes of reprimands or censors as directed by the council, and appeals. Whereas, for 19 years, Karen Sublet has faithfully and diligently performed these duties, preparing agendas and meetings for approximately 800 city council meetings, calling thousands of agenda items, and transcribing innumerable pages of minutes, and coordinating signatures and official publications of thousands of essential documents, thus ensuring smooth meetings and accurate official records for the government of the city. And whereas, through her efforts, Karen Sublet has professionally served the citizens of Wichita, its elected officials and employees. And whereas, Karen has devoted personal time and effort towards her professional development to enhance the performance of her city duties by earning the Mini-MPA certification from the Hugo Wall School of Urban and Public Affairs at Wichita State University. And whereas, Karen has also devoted her time to the City Clerks and Municipal Finance Officers Association of Kansas, recently serving as president of this organization, which exists to promote responsive and responsible government. Whereas, because of her cheerfulness, kindness, patience, and humor, Karen has the admiration and friendship of her many colleagues over 19 years. And whereas, the City of, this Wichita City Council finds that it is most appropriate to recognize, thank, and celebrate Karen Sublet for her service to the City of Wichita and to the state of Kansas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wichita City Council hereby congratulates and wishes Karen Sublet a very happy retirement." So I hereby make the motion to accept the resolution as it has been read. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Please let the record reflect that this resolution passed unanimously.
Make sure she gets all that in the minutes.
On behalf of the City Council, we wanted to present you with a ceremonial resolution as well. The only one who hasn't signed it is actually the clerk. We haven't been able to find Jamie. Please make sure Jamie is able to sign it so it becomes official.
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate for Karen to make a few comments.
Speaks, speaks. The chair recognizes the clerk.
Okay. Well, thank you all so much. Like I've been saying, everybody comes around and says, "Aren't you so excited to be walking out the door?" And it's like, no. It's kind of bittersweet, because I love this job. I love the people I work with. Mayor Whipple, you're my fourth mayor. I've had, counting all the, the city managers and interim, I think that I went through, I've been able to work with eight. And I don't know, I can't say enough about it. I know Clerk's office is in great hands with Jamie and with our new deputy city clerk, Sasha Beard. And I always call myself an accidental city clerk, because technically I wanted to get in the medical field. And when I moved to Rose Hill, I was a stay-at-home mom. They needed a secretary at City Hall. I went and interviewed. They offered me the job for $4.25 an hour. And I said, "May I, please, can you at least pay me $4.50?" They said, "No, this is all we can afford." And I had a metal desk that had a wonky leg. Served the city of Rose Hill for 10 years before coming here. But... The petitions for your consideration this morning, as always, represent 100% improvement district and our valid for Kansas statute. We have one development, MISA addition, Phase One, in District Five that includes petitions for water drainage, sewer and paving improvements. And that's all we have for today. Staff recommend City Council approve the petitions and budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Now be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there a discussion on this item? See none? If there's no further discussion on this item, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Before we get to the councilmember appointments and comments, I would like to make a motion on councilmember agenda to take up a resolution for discussion, resolution titled "A Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Wichita Regarding Karen Seblett's Service to the City." Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. We're now in a resolution of the governing body of the City of Wichita regarding Karen Seblett's service to the city. I'll read the resolution. Whereas, City Code Section 204.130 sets forth the duties of city clerk as follows, quote, "The city clerk shall be ex-official clerk for the council, shall keep minutes of the meetings, and shall perform such other duties and further duties in the meetings as may be directed by the City Council or City Manager. The city clerk shall keep the official records of the city as may be required by the statutes, shall be authorized to maintain summary form of minutes indicating official actions taken in council meetings, and shall maintain recordings of all council meetings on file for a period of at least four years after each meeting. Summary minutes of each meeting shall show the attendants a short summary of each matter acted upon, the action taken with respect to each member, the vote, the dilations as ordered by the Chair, reprimands and ordered by the Chair, votes of reprimands or censors as directed by the council and appeals. Whereas, for 19 years, Karen Seblett has faithfully and diligently performed these duties, preparing agendas and meetings for approximately 800 city council meetings, calling thousands of agenda items, and transcribing innumerable pages of minutes, and coordinating signatures and official publications of thousands of essential documents, thus ensuring smooth meetings and accurate official records for the government of the city. And whereas, through her efforts, Karen Seblett has professionally served the citizens of Wichita, its elected officials and employees. And whereas, Karen has devoted personal time and effort towards her professional development to enhance the performance of her city duties by earning the Mini-MPA certification from the Hugo Wall School of Urban and Public Affairs at Wichita State University. And whereas, Karen has also devoted her time to the City Clerks and Administrative Finance Officers Association of Kansas, recently serving as president of this organization, was exists to promote responsive and responsible government. Whereas, because of her cheerfulness, kindness, patience, and humor, Karen has the admiration and friendship of her many colleagues over 19 years. And whereas, the City of, this Wichita City Council finds that it is most appropriate to recognize, thank, and celebrate Karen Seblett for her service to the City of Wichita and to the state of Kansas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council hereby congratulates and wishes Karen Seblett a very happy retirement." So I hereby make the motion to accept the resolution as it has been read. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Please let the record reflect that this resolution passed unanimously.
Make sure she gets all that in the minutes.
Mr. President, first of all, before the City Council, we wanted to present you with a ceremonial resolution as well. The only one who hasn't signed it is actually the clerk. We haven't been able to find Jamie. Please make sure Jamie is able to sign it so it becomes official.
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate for Karen to make a few comments.
The chair recognizes the clerk.
Okay, that's fine. Well, thank you all so much. Like I've been saying, everybody comes around and says, "Aren't you so excited to be walking out the door?" And it's like, no, it's kind of bittersweet, because I love this job. I love the people I work with. Mayor Wickel, you're my fourth mayor. I've had, counting all the, the city managers and interim, I think there, I went through, I've been able to work with eight. And I don't know, I can't say enough about it. I know Clerk's office is in great hands with Jamie and with our new deputy city clerk, Sasha Beard. And I always call myself an accidental city clerk, because technically I wanted to get in the medical field. And when I moved to Rose Hill, I was a stay-at-home mom. They needed a secretary at City Hall. I went and interviewed. They offered me the job for $4.25 an hour. And I said, "May I, please, can you at least pay me $4.50?" They said, "No, this is all we can afford." And I had a metal desk that had a wonky leg. Served the City of Rose Hill for 10 years before coming here. But this has been the best career move that I have ever had, and it's, like I said, it's going to be bittersweet. Thank you all so much.
Well, thank you for all your service. Now on to board appointments. Is there any appointments at this time?
I'd like to appoint Paul Farhall to CDEBG.
Further appointments?
I'd like to appoint Amanda Gillespie to the Wichita Sager County Access Advisory Board.
Further appointments? I'd like to appoint Kay Drennan to the Stormwater Advisory Board. And also, I'd like to acknowledge the City Manager's appointments to the Citizen Review Board as follows. Richard Harris, Dennis Bender, Jay Fowler, Sean Rozas, Ordel Harris, and Jamie Lopez. Is there any further appointments? Make a motion to accept all appointments.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Back on councilmember comments, are there any comments?
Yeah, just one comment. I just want to highlight, thanks to more contributions, there is an opportunity for more signup for free swim lessons over at McAfee Pool that will start tomorrow in person between 1:00 and 5:15. So if you have a young person, take them over there, get them signed up, and it's free until the scholarships are gone, so get over there around 1:00 if you can.
Further comments? See none. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it?